I'd like to call the meeting out of order. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance. All right, thanks for coming, everybody. It's definitely cold outside. Reminds me of an old joke. It's so cold outside, I saw a politician outside with his hands in his own pockets. You can substitute lawyers for that, too. All right, moving right along, roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Tom Kruger.
Here.
Chris O'Regan.
Here.
Sandy Kufel.
Here.
Okay. Bill's payable, accept the motion, pay the bills?
Make a motion for bills payable in the amount of $67,344.90.
Second. Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
Retrofits for the new hydrant, has that hit the bills yet? For the new hydrants that they're putting in at the DPW?
Did we buy, I can't remember if we actually...
Did we buy it, or is it still in?
It's still, I don't think we have yet. But it's, we budgeted to retrofit 10 of them.
Right, right, okay.
You won't see it on the bills payable because it's already been board approved.
Okay.
Just so you know, if you were ever looking for it on this report, it would be on the check reports of bills paid in between meetings. I don't know that was approved about a month or two back.
Right.
I don't know if we paid that bill.
I didn't, I didn't.
Or if it's still pending, starts coming in.
Because it is, they have to build the kits for us.
Right, yeah, I know that.
I just want to point out...
Okay, so, it'll be in there at some point in time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just want to point out, under General Audit for $11,000, that will be dispersed between all the other departments eventually. You know, water, police, fire, so forth, sewer. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Tom Kruger.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, next we have public comments. You can say anything you want. I will limit it to three minutes because we have a lot of people here. And so anyway, would you like to address the board in public comments? Going once, going twice? Come on up, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Beth Paul. I live at 9315 Shortcut Ira. I'm standing before you today, and I honestly, I don't know what I'm going to say. But I know I can't leave here and not say anything. What you have done, Artie, I'm ashamed of you. I have known this man, Daryl DuPage, for almost two decades. A man who almost lost his life, lost his left leg. His whole right leg is reconstructed from the knee down. And he stands every day in pain, 24/7. He takes no medication for it. He's not an alcoholic. I asked him two years after I started working on Daryl, because you know, I'm his massage therapist. It took me that long because what I asked was very, very personal. And I asked him what had happened? And what he endured during that accident, and almost losing his life. It's a complete miracle that he's absolutely here today. And he rebuilt his life being a firefighter. And after he told me this grave story about what happened to him, of course he was on the side of the road helping somebody else. I was quite angry. I was very, very angry. And I said to him, "I hope to hell you prosecuted the man that hit you." And he got very quiet. And then he looked at me in the eyes and he said, "Beth, that young man worked two jobs to support his kids and his wife." He said it was a horrible, horrible accident. I did not prosecute. That says a lot. Because I don't know, I don't know if I could have done that. That horrible accident changed his entire life. And I can't, for the life of me, think what in the hell he could have done for you to take his life away from him. This isn't just a career. His whole life is in this department. He made you look good. He really did.
Mm-hmm.
He did one hell of a job. I just, I just really hope, whatever you had three weeks of putting together, that it holds. Because I honestly, I don't think so. And I think in six months' time, I think a lot of people will find out the truth and see it for what it really, really is. You have left quite a week. And this is, this is where it stops. No more, no more.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Say your name and address, please.
Sure. Debbie Ruby Onis to Munich, 3020 South Channel Drive, Harson's Island. I want to know if there's going to be time for us to discuss unfinished business separation agreement with DuPage?
It's right, well, it's public comments.
Or is this it right now?
Yeah.
How can I discuss it when I don't understand it?
Well...
When will you present what happened?
It's a board decision, we'll address that at that point.
Okay, so, given that it seemed to happen rather quickly, are there any, there's not going to be any information about what happened? This, 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 this?
At this time, probably not, but we'll address that.
When?
Tonight's meeting, we'll address it somewhat.
You know, I have a concern about that because I don't think it's fair. This guy has helped me out personally a lot. You know, we had a house fire, there were times where he literally came to help me get up when I couldn't get up if I fell. He's helped so many people. And I don't understand, I don't know if due process has been done? Did he get like a verbal warning? And then did he get a written warning? And then did he get something? I mean, it seems like it happened really fast. How did all that happen so quickly? So, none of that gets answered?
Not right now, no.
All right, well, I just needed to say that.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. I just wanted to congratulate the guys in the fire department for going union.
Name and address, please.
It's not required. By law, it's not. They went through Tucodgeville.
Okay.
Okay. And wondered, it's my understanding with the SAFER grant that there was a letter of intent to give the water, the hydrant maintenance back to the fire department? And in a year that hasn't been done? I just wondered, I guess you have to foil that information, you guys don't answer questions? Why it hasn't been done?
Not sure yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none. Move right along to the consent agenda. entertain a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda of the board meeting minutes of December 19th and synopsis. Check reports, the December police, building and zoning, and water department reports. There were no notices. There were fourth quarter library board reports that were submitted to the township and no requests at this time. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is everyone good with the consent agenda? Any discussion?
Just the minutes, under Board Member Comments, under Tom Kruger, what I said at the last meeting. It says, "Not pleased he didn't receive a phone call regarding DuPage. Advised, support whatever means necessary." I don't even know what that means. What does that mean?
I don't know, that's your words.
My words.
We can go back through the tape and look at it, I guess.
Well, I appreciate that because I don't know what that means. I wasn't pleased, that's for sure. But I don't know what the second half means. Support whatever means necessary. Is that, I don't know what that means. But I'd like to clarify that in some way, shape, or form. So it makes sense.
Okay, anything else? I guess we can approve it on a clerk.
Yeah, with a change.
With a change of clarifying Tom's comments. So we can add that motion and you still support it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Okay, Supervisors Report. I apologize in advance, it's a long one, I've been busy. I'd like to open up, or open it with our ice rink is open. And I was actually talking to someone that was skating in the park. I can't remember, I think it was Friday. And this gentleman, and he, I believe it was his wife and a kid or two. And he said that he, he's, he works in the Coast Guard and he's getting ready to retire. He bought a home full-time in Clay Township. And the big reason was because of that park. And he loves skating in it. And he, like I say, he's in the Coast Guard, and this is his last two years. He's a helicopter pilot out of St. Clair Shores. And he actually asked me the possibility of having a little party for the shores Coast Guard here on the ice rink in the next couple, three weeks. So I told him, "Yeah, give me a call, we'll set it up." So, that was kind of nice to hear. And he really, really appreciates the park. And it was one of the big reasons that he moved here, so. Did receive a notice today from the IRS. We received a credit for $10,710 for credit for payroll taxes that we paid from when we had funds embezzled from our old clerk, Lisa White. And that credit took about two years, that finally came through today. And I'm actually expecting another one, about half as much here. And who knows how long that takes. But we did get our first credit back. You know, it was $10,700, so that was a nice letter to open today. Fire Department voted last Wednesday to form a union. And like I told them before, but you know, I'll work, you know, with the fire department and the union and to go forward, make it the best possible fire department as we can. And we, we will be, right now, I just sit to wait to, for the union to contact us for negotiating. I suggest that we make a negotiating team. So, if, what's that?
We have one by board policy.
Do we have one by the policy? Two and one trustee? Okay. And so then, at that time, we'll probably set up a meeting with them. I've already started actually reviewing some contracts that other agencies sign, especially the management rights and policies procedure. But you know, union or no union, it's got to be done through the budget process. And you know, I agree, too, the duty shifts need a bump in pay. When I first got in office, four and a half years ago, I think the night duty shift was around $2 an hour. And through the budget process, which is, in my mind, was illegal. It's not even, you know, minimum wage. We bumped it up to $4.50. And then, as soon as we can, we bumped it up to $8.50 and just went up to $8.90. But we did that to comply with the, with the law. We did that within the budget process, too. And going forward, that's what we'll have to see. I definitely would like to get a raise for the day, the duty shift day guys. I think it should be a step, depending on what certifications they have. And that's going forward, so forth, so. Anyhow, we'll be, you know, sitting down with that. And I mean, as a sidebar, too, you know, I don't have a problem with them unionizing. They're right, of course. I mean... Sit down, this is, sit down, please. You're out of order. You're, you're out of order. You're out of order. You want to leave? Sit down.
You're a liar.
So, anyhow, like I say, we have five unions here already. I probably, I negotiated 10 contracts successfully. And, you know, once the initial part's done, it'll probably be less work for us and our administration. The, received notice from the county, and it was actually a state law that was just passed not too long ago. The township does have an option to require competitive bidding on local road projects now. And the stipulation would be the township has to contribute at least 50% of the cost of the project. And it's got to be $50,000 or more for a paved road project, or $25,000 or more for unpaid project. And it doesn't really include maintenance, maintenance projects. But we do have that right. In my mind, you know, I go to different meetings, township meetings all over the state, and all the, all the township officials, they complain about their county road department. But I have to admit, ours is pretty good. I, I don't, we don't have the same complaints as other ones, other townships and other counties have. But that is an option, and I just want to let the board know about that. Also, I wanted to inform the board that we did go with the single band 800 MHz pagers. I know the interim chief, Don, and chief coach, they got together and they both decided that's probably the best route to go. And it was actually, it was a $4,300 savings going forward with that. I've been appointed to the Township Road and Bridge Advisory Committee. And I have a meeting tomorrow at 10:00. So, that's a good thing. And we were off of that for the past four years, so we have, we're back on that. They rotate townships in and out of that. As, I'm not sure how, Bill, do you know how many are on that board?
No, I don't, Artie.
But there's not enough spots for the whole, for all the townships to be represented on it. But we're back on it now. Had a real encouraging meeting this past week with Jeff Friedland. He's the County Emergency Manager. And from this meeting, we're going to be starting a lot of things. First thing, we're going to be starting up a community readiness program. Basically, if something happens here, a disaster or something, we are going to be on our own for 72 hours. It's going to take that long for emergency services, FEMA, or whatever, to get here. And so, the purpose of this is to, you know, make our neighborhoods and make our community ready for an emergency, if that does so happen, God forbid. And what they found out is it's best to split up the township in neighbors, neighborhoods. For instance, maybe like the Bird Lanes would be one, Colony Isles sub will be one, North Clay would be one, we'd probably have a couple on Harson's Island, a couple on Backroads. Split them up, and then we're going to ask for team leaders from each of these, these areas and to volunteer. And then each team leader would have at least two meetings a year with their neighbors just to make sure that there's kind of like a plan intact if there is an emergency. And it helps with communications. It's just nothing more than, okay, we got to make sure, check on certain people. Make sure, you know, people have water and food and that sort of thing. Like I say, it takes about 72 hours before someone does get here. And we're going, they recently just did this in Elginak to get the ball rolling. But it's basically to educate the neighborhoods at, just how to take care of themselves as needed. The groups will be working hand in hand with the fire department, police department, the county emergency management team going forward to help educate the people how to be ready. And they can actually have presentations in their neighborhoods for different topics, too. It could be anything from a neighborhood watch type thing to, what if we do, you know, for this or that? And they kind of run with the ball their own, their own selves to see how involved or not involved they want to be. So we're going to, we're going to kick off that in the near future and try to get that organized and have a couple town hall meetings with that topic going forward. Also, we'll be hosting with the schools. It's called Survival Rival Competition. And how they put it to me, it's going to be open up to 5th graders. It's, it's like a game show where they're going to, it's like a Jeopardy! or something like that. And they ask these kids, you know, questions, and whoever answers it. It's a competition, looking to get three or four teams of four. And we're actually going to be doing this February 25th at the police station from 9:00 to 11:00, this is Saturday. And whoever wins out of this from our community, they'll go in competition with other communities. I think the semis would be in Marine City, and then they'll have one countywide for all the communities. And they got prizes and everything involved with that. What else do we have going on? We actually had good conversations with the emergency management group. They're going to actually help us out some with, actually, we'll be helping each other out with jobby nooners and raft off. How it is, they, they coordinate, if something happens, they call it an event. They like to coordinate events to, to, you know, make it safe again. Well, this is kind of like a scheduled event that they know. So they're going to use it for a little bit of training on their side. But they're actually going to help us out with added resources. Such, set us up with better radios, our own radio station for better communications. They're going to help us set up a better command center and help us coordinate with all the other agencies involved. Like, right now, a jobby noon, there's probably 10, 12 agencies showing up from the Coast Guard, a couple sheriff's departments, multiple police departments and fire departments. And they're going to help coordinate all the, all the different agencies. Because really, you know, the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's been doing out there. And so they're going to give us some help on that, and they're going to also use it for training. We're going to start a STEPS program. That's this. It's through the schools. All the kids will get this full of stuff, this bag. STEPS means Student Tools for Emergency Program. And it's taught to 5th graders, and it's about, it'll be split up in about two or three classes, an hour long. They do it in conjunction with a reading class, a math class, and I think a science class. But basically, they teach kids how to, what to do, how to be prepared for an emergency. And they, and they show us how to, they show them how to do an emergency preparedness kit for their home. And develop a communication plan and making specific meeting places and that sort of thing. We're working with the schools right now to develop that program. And again, that will be in, at the 5th grade level. We had some talks about some of the people that are out on the water, or even in the state park, that you don't, aren't in front of a TV set or something, about the WINS system. That's the Warning Information Notification System. And they're actually creating a phone app for WINS that we can, they can put on your phone. So if there is severe weather coming here, or a water, a boil water thing going on, that they'll, they'll get the information through their phone app. And they're planning on making that available at the state park for the campers and that sort of thing. We had discussions about hosting a NIMS class, National Incident Management System Training. I was really kind of unaware that, you know, people in the township were actually required to be NIMS certified. Both police and fire departments, the schools, and other people are actually, you know, required to be NIMS certified. And so I asked them, or, you know, they, they asked about that. And I said, "Well, where's the classes?" "They're all up in Port here." Well, they're actually going to host a couple of them down here. And we don't know the time yet, but they, they have already committed to have some training down here. So everyone down river in the communities can take advantage of that. And then there was talks about, with the emergency management program, they got a lot of resources that we don't have. And they're going to help us with some Homeland Security Grant, possibly. What we're eyeing on is getting another dispatch council in our dispatch center. We were going to do that ourselves, but they're fairly confident that we could probably get a Homeland Security Grant. And how that works, they would pay 75%, and the township would be responsible for 25%. And they're going to work hand in hand with that to get that. And then we were talking about other fire grants for personal protection and firefighting equipment. They're the ones that got the vote for Elginak Fire Department recently. And they said, you know, they're pretty successful on getting grants for fire, personal protection equipment, all different kinds of, kinds of equipment and so forth and so on. I mean, even if it's just like Scott Packs or turnout gear, there's grants available for all those. Unfortunately, that, those grants were closed six weeks ago, so we're going to have to wait a year to get those. They wanted me to appoint an emergency management liaison. Whoever that would be, it would be, it would require about four meetings a year, plus, you know, some emails and everything. So I was going to ask if anyone on the board wanted to volunteer for that, or it could even be someone in the public. So I'll probably be involved with that initially myself. But if anyone would like to, to get involved with the emergency management side of that, we're going to be looking for a volunteer to go forward with that. to go forward with that. We're having an open sealed bid for the work being done on our 200,000 gallon water tank. It's out for bid right now, in fact, there's a bid packet. That's the tank on Amesworth. We voted to have some work done on that. This one's going to be exterior overcoat, fix the pit piping, repaint it, and miscellaneous repairs. We're going to open that sealed bid January 19th at 2:00 here. Also, bids are going out for the Merrill Street Bridge, that's the bridge that goes back to Sassy Marine, and construction's going to start this spring. And I was very adamant, they put in the bid that it has to be done by the end of June. We can't have that construction going in the middle of summer. It will be a one-way bridge for a while, but when that first was presented to me, I about died, because it was, they said, "Well, it's estimated it's going to cost $850,000." Yeah, that's what I said. And not only that, $850,000, we're in the wrong business. And the following year, we have money secured to do the Flamingo Bridge, and that one's, they're estimating a million. But it was $850,000, so we went to work between county managing funds and county grants, state grants, and federal funds. It's actually going to cost the township about $3,500. Originally, we were looking at, it was going to cost us about $35,000, because at the time, the township would have to even pay 100% for the engineer to be there the whole time, you know, the guy that sits in the truck while they're doing the work, and it looks important that we would have to pay for him, but we actually found monies that will actually take care of that. And so, our share of that project's going to be about $3,500. And so, that's great. And again, that's good, that construction, that's going to start sometime this spring, and it has to be finished by the end of June. Had a meeting today with Ken Cummings, he's the CEO of Tri Hospital. We probably met for about two hours discussing different things. It was a very productive meeting. What came out of it, and this pertains to the whole township, but mostly Harson's Island. Back in the day, when there was emergencies, especially down at the turnaround at Harson's Island, the ambulance used to pick up the patient, get them to the ferry on one side or the other, transfer them to Tri Hospital, and they would take them to the hospital. Well, that all stopped for, I guess, legal reasons and liability and so forth and so on. Anyhow, we worked it out where if there is, if it's a life-threatening condition, trauma, stroke, someone's in very critical shape for some reason or another, it's not going to happen if there's a broken arm. And there's not an EMS readily available, is the term. And readily available means if they're on this side of the river and the accident's over there, or if, for some reason, the EMS Tri Hospital is out of this area, it pertained to this, the mainland, we not, we will have the ability to pick the patient up and transfer them to the nearest Tri Hospital rig and then do the transfer again. So, that is going to be very beneficial, especially if something happens down the turnaround. We can stabilize the patient, put them in our rig, bring them to the ferry or wherever they figure is the best place to meet, instead of waiting for Tri to drive all the way down there to get the patient. And another thing that they also agreed to, if it looks like there's going to be an ice jam, and we could be out of ferry service for a while, they committed to stage a rig on Harson's Island. So, that was resolved today. So, I think that's going to give us better coverage, twofold, over on Harson's Island and on this side, if there is an issue where they are out of the area for some reason. Laura Petzel, she's been here for 16 years, she just retired last week, and she will be sorely missed. We had a little retirement thing for her last Thursday, and she was a great employee. I always said, "Boy, I wish I could clone her to three or four," but she retired after 16 years of service, and she will be missed. We do have, the planning commission has been working on a draft for our Clay Township Parks and Rec program. It's, the draft is going to be the 2017 to 2021 Parks and Rec Plan, and we are having a public hearing on that. It is Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, 11, January 11, 7:00 here. And we do have copies of that plan here at the township hall and at the Reader's Cove on the island and at the Elginak Library, plus it's online. So, if you have any suggestions or anything you want for our Parks and Rec, come 7:00 here Wednesday, and you can, we'll be able to discuss them. Upcoming events, we've got lots of stuff going on. Our Leisure and Activity Club's been growing, it meets the second Thursday of the month at the high school from 6:00 to 10:00. And again, this is activities and games geared for special needs adults, 18 and over. And they are actually looking for opportunities where they can do volunteering in the community. And this meeting, they have functions going on there, but they actually have other functions that they plan from this Thursday meeting, second Thursday of the month. And so, if you know of any volunteers or needed for some special needs adults, they're looking for opportunities. I think they have ones going on right now of the group, and so, it's great, it helps everybody out. Our Consumer Education Series continues, we have two more left, one's Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, and that one, no, I'm sorry, it's January 18th it is, and it's put on by the Attorney General's Office, and this one is dealing with home care and senior resident scams. And we had to switch it, it was being held here, but the ZBA switched their meetings from Thursday to Wednesday, so we're going to have the last two over at the police station in their training facility. And then February 15th is investment frauds. They started a new club, Eat Healthy, Be Active. It started just this last Saturday, it was held here at 9:30 in the morning. They actually had about 15 people come for it, and they're expecting 20 people next week. It's going to go five more weeks, walk-ins or more of it are definitely welcome. It's free, and so, if you want to learn and take part in eating healthy and being more active, 9:30 Saturdays here. Starting this Wednesday, our Clay Township Youth Tennis League is starting, it goes from ages 5 to 10, is being held at the school. We have pretty good turnout so far. I think we have, where was it? I think we have 10 or 12 people pre-registered, which they're good with. The charge is $95 for the six weeks, but that also includes your tennis racket, each kid gets a free tennis racket, and balls. And it's put on by the U.S. Tennis Association. That's starting Wednesday, and goes through February 15th, six weeks. I mentioned our Survival Rival Competition, that's going to be in the police station, that's February 25th. And we are starting Cooking for Teens class. It's going to teach them cooking with fresh meat, vegetables, fruit, and eating healthy. It's going to be done at the high school. In fact, our intern that we have here, Abby, who's interning after school for us, she's actually going to be involved with that, help out with the marketing and get it organized in the school. That's going to be Mondays for six weeks, 2:45 to 4:45. Other programs we're still working on is Adult Pickleball League. We're looking at cooking classes being held at the Schoolhouse Grill, we're in talks with them, going on that, and that's going to be through the MSU Extension. We're working with the 4H Club, doing day camps for kids, and actually doing paying classes and a builder's camp for kids. So, we're going to have lots of stuff coming down the pipe. Winterfest is going full blast, we're help planning on that, I think it's the second weekend of February. They're going to have entertainment in the Beer Tent Friday and Saturday and Sunday, big-time wrestling, WWE or whatever it is, we have wrestling here. So, that's always fun. So, sorry it's a long report, but we got through it. Wake up, time to wake up. Zach, you have a question?
Back to your meeting with Jeff Friedland.
Yeah.
Since there was so much at that meeting, how often do those meetings take place with him?
Well, we haven't really met with him in quite some time. We really haven't had open communications with him. So, I have, but as far as anything else, we really haven't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving right along, unfinished business. We have the separation agreement with Darrell DuPage, and first I'd like to have our, Key Zick, he's our legal, come up and give us a little update, and if you could.
Thank you. That was the longest supervisor to report.
I know, sorry.
Forty years of doing this.
I told you.
It was informative.
Yep.
Let me say that in regard to Mr. DuPage, that, first of all, Mr. DuPage was, is, an at-will employee of the township, and I know that's created some issues, because if there was any effort to terminate him, there is no reason to go into just cause. You're either an at-will employee or a just cause employee. Four weeks ago, he was informed that, about a possible termination as an at-will employee, he was tendered a separation agreement by law, he has 21 days to respond to that, that 21 days has come and gone. In the intervening time, I should share with the board that, as I have with the supervisor and the clerk, I've had communication with his attorney. I learned about his attorney, because his attorney's name was in the paper, and so, I contacted that attorney, and I've asked for that attorney to provide me, which he did, with a copy of whatever claim her client might have against the township. Now, the reason for that is that, and she also gave me a proposed draft of a complaint that he might file in the St. Clair County Circuit Court, and it has not been filed as of this time, because she and I, his attorney, Ms. Sharp, have had discussions, although I have received a copy of that complaint. Knowing all of that, it is, you know, my position, my advice to the township, that you have to decide about Mr. DuPage's, his status as an, as a at-will employee. And you, as a board, have a right, without specifying reasons, to terminate him as a at-will employee. I do not advise you to go into reasons, because it contradicts the whole purpose of having an employment contract that allows for someone to be terminated at will. Otherwise, through union contracts, there's a grievance procedure, often if you're an employee and subject to employee policies, there's a procedure there, too. But as an at-will employee, that really does not, is not applicable in the situation with Mr. DuPage. Because of the pending claim, and by the way, that, that letter, that formal letter of claim against the township has been forwarded to the insurance carrier of the township, they undoubtedly will be appointing an adjuster. If, in fact, the claim ends up being filed in court, they will undoubtedly also be appointing probably outside legal counsel, their own attorneys to defend that. For all of those reasons, I just, and I know this is not what necessarily Artie wants to do, because he could give reasons, I've told him not to give reasons, and because it would be to the detriment and the potential liability of the township, and it was not the forum, or the forum to be engaged in. These meetings, township meetings, and I appreciate the fact that they have to be open meetings and you get public comment, but we should not be engaging in a dialogue. If, in fact, this turns into litigation, which it could at any moment, then we should not be having an ongoing dialogue with the public, and, or with anyone for that matter, because once it's in that legal arena in the court system, things are going to shut down, and it's going to work its way, if it does, through that system. So, it's appropriate at this point, since the separation agreement has not been accepted by Mr. DuPage, for the township to take whatever action they want regarding his at-will
To reiterate, I wanted to give reasons. Our attorneys, we're being advised to protect the township, we shouldn't.
Also, let me add that the insurance company has also joined in that, our insurance carrier. So, it's not just me, although I'll take that burden on, that was my advice, not to engage in discussions or to give reasons, but your insurance company, your insurance carrier is saying the same thing.
Does anybody have any questions? Any board members have any questions? No?
No.
This isn't public, this isn't public discussion right now. This isn't public discussion right now. I'm going to make a motion that we terminate Darrell DuPage, effective immediately.
Under the circumstances, I guess I'll have to support that.
Okay. Have motion support? Any discussion with the board?
So, there's, there's no reason, we can't say a reason? Is that what our attorney is advising us?
Not publicly, right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mark Burchard.
No.
Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Tom Kruger.
No.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, new business.
Very interesting timing that it happened right after the election.
New business, tax account reconciliation. It was brought to my attention at our, and Tom, I, we have, you were doing reconciliations on the tax account, Colony Road.
All of them.
And the two CDs, and they haven't been done since June 30th.
30th, right.
And they want to know if I should have them do that, or how.
The accounts?
Yeah, yeah, and I wanted to get a quote from them, but it was too late, but it'd probably be our hourly rate for Lee, the one auditor, and I think he's about 120 an hour. So... So, um, I thought I'd bring it to the board to see how, how we want to, uh, he, he's come to, he's come to the point where he, he feels that it could, could blemish our, uh, our audit going forward for next year. That, uh, you know, we should have these, uh, accounts reconciled monthly, and they haven't been done since end of June. So I just didn't wanna give them the go-ahead to do these five. I don't think it would take a whole lot of time, but, uh, uh, you know, we, we have to get them reconciled one way or another.
So Stuart Ravan Whipple offered to reconcile the accounts?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to have Stuart Ravan Whipple reconcile the, what is it, tax account?
Tax, I think, uh.
Colony maintenance.
And we have a couple CD accounts.
And CD accounts?
They didn't give us a cost associated with them doing?
Not yet, it's gonna be, uh, he's gonna give us an estimate of the hours.
They already do our, um, general fund account right now. I believe these aren't anything near.
Right.
What it takes to do the general account.
And also the DDA account hasn't been, uh, reconciled since June 30th also. And I was gonna bring that up to the DDA, 'cause they're independent on how, how they want that handled.
I mean, our, our accounts have to be reconciled.
Well, we have been responsible for audit, for reconciling their accounts.
Right.
In the past.
Right.
Same way with the, um, Colony Fund.
Mm-hmm. The, the CD accounts, yeah, we have four or five. So, but, but like I say, they're, they're telling me, we gotta get it reconciled soon. And they asked me if, you know, the township wanted them to do that or not, so, um. You made a motion?
Oh yeah, I mean, the end of January is gonna be seven months, so I think they need to be done.
It's been seven months now. Do we have support yet, though?
Not yet.
She, she, she made a motion for.
Can we have a little more discussion on this?
Well, well, you do support, then you discuss.
I'll support that.
Okay, we got support. Okay, we have discussion now. Go ahead.
Is, Mr. Kruger, is this something you've historically done in the past for us? Or, or is this something we've subbed out in the past?
Well, it's, let, let me see, um, they have been done by the accountants until about, what, a year ago? Maybe? About a year ago, that's when I started reconciling them. But then I've been out, out of the office, ill, and I haven't had a chance to do them. I did them through the end of last year, but, uh, haven't done them since.
So the ones on June 30th, you didn't do, the accountants did, is that correct?
Yeah, I did.
Up to June 30th.
Up to June 30th, they were done by me.
Fiscal year.
Provided the good Lord grants you your health back, is this something?
Hopefully in two or three weeks, I, I'm hoping I can get back.
Is this something you hope to engage again in the future? Can you reconcile our future tax accounts?
Absolutely.
You're probably a lot better at it than I am.
I've been a CPA for four, over 45 years.
Yeah, well, I'm sure you're way better at it than I am.
I should be able to do it.
Fantastic.
No, I did them in the past, there's, uh, uh, but I just haven't been here.
Okay.
Would you be able to get them done before the accountants would be able to get them done?
Probably.
What did you say the cost of that's going to be estimated?
Uh, I don't have a, a time estimate yet, um, but I believe our, the rate would be $120 an hour.
Hey, um, Tom, how long does it usually take?
To do a reconcile all the accounts?
Yeah.
I don't know, um, I haven't had to do a bunch of them like this yet, all at once, but, uh, I think by the end of the year, they can be all squared away without any problem, a few months.
If we hire these as a contractor, would you be able to participate in them as well? Cut the time down?
Yeah, when I get back, sure.
And when do you expect to get back?
I'm hoping in about two to three weeks.
And when does the tax account, the reconciliation have to be in?
Well, it should be done monthly, all accounts. That was one of the things that we did, um, to clean up our, our, uh, problems in the past. You know, we, we said we need proper closing procedures, they never were in place here. And one of them was that all the bank, bank, uh, accounts were reconciled every month, you know, towards, or in the following month. These haven't been done for six months, and, uh, they, they brought it to my attention that it should be dealt with real soon, one way or another, and, uh, they wanted to know how I wanted to deal with it, so I'm bringing it to the board.
Yeah, to put it in perspective, uh, none of these accounts were reconciled by the treasurer, the treasurer's office before. They were all done by the accountant, okay? I, my, when I took office four years ago, my intention was to take them over. Well, when I took office, we had nothing but problems because we had a clerk that wasn't doing, uh, her job and ultimately was, uh, embezzling. So, uh, Artie and I had to pick up, uh, a lot of her efforts, or a lot of her work, and we hired our accountants to come in and do some of the stuff that we had done before, or that we wanted to do before. One of them was to reconcile the bank accounts. And the accountants took them until about a year ago, and then after that, I picked them up and reconciled them all. Then I've been ill.
These five, yeah.
Yeah, then I've been ill, and I haven't had a chance to get at them. My, my intention was, when I come back, to get in there and reconcile all the accounts. Some of them are not that difficult to do, because they're fairly small. So, it's up to the board, if you wanna have the accountants do them, and get them done right away, that's fine. If you wanna wait for another month or so, uh, if there's a, you know, then I can come back, hopefully, in another two or three weeks, and get involved with them.
Question, Tom, when you reconcile one, normally, how long does it take you?
Well, it depends, some of the smaller ones, not very long at all.
What's that, you, a couple hours?
Yeah. Some of the bigger ones, uh, like the, uh, investment accounts and, uh, the tax account, you know, there's more involved in that, 'cause all, all the tax collections go through that. So that takes a little while longer, but.
Eight hours, five hours, four hours?
I don't know, Joanne, I can't put, I can't put a, a number on it. But obviously, within a couple months, I should be able to pick, bring them all up to speed.
How big is the list?
Uh, the list of how many accounts?
Yeah.
There's five.
There's five that I do, and three that the accountants do.
So five at six months is 30 reconciliations?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
It's not a big deal.
If, if something occurs that you don't, you're, you're saying you'll get back within.
Yeah, two or three weeks, I hope to get back. I got a doctor's appointment in another couple weeks, and hopefully he'll be releasing me to get back to work.
But if that doesn't occur, are we then in jeopardy for putting it off for a while, or are we gonna have?
A fine?
Well, I can only say that.
Are we gonna have our?
I can only say that since I've been here, nobody has bothered to look at any of the reconciliations. I mean, I've been here over four years, and not once has any, any asked me to look at a reconciliation. So, use your own judgment.
Yeah, but if it's something that we're supposed to be doing, I mean, whether.
We put a lot of effort into our past audit, doing our checks and balances and making sure things are be done. I just don't want, I personally don't wanna see them get behind.
Well, then have the accountants do it.
So.
What do you think we should do?
Who, me?
Yeah.
Well, I can't tell you what to do. If you wanna have the accounts do them, do them. If you don't, they'll be done within a couple of months after I get back. So it's up to the, up to the board what they wanna do.
My, uh, my feeling is we're in month seven, or going in, right now. In a couple of months, that'll be month nine. It'd be the first time we reconcile these accounts. In, in this fiscal year, I, 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 I don't like that.
Well, have the accounts. Get them done as soon as possible, I mean.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't be a big bill, uh, they should be able to bang them out pretty quick.
Right.
Couple of them are. Couple of thousand?
I have no idea.
Who knows, huh?
Well.
I think, I think we should just go ahead and get things up to date and get on with it.
I agree.
Is it critical? Is there, is there a need? Now, and, and we have accounts, right? And can we separate these into A, Bs, and Cs?
If nothing's wrong, there's, it's not critical.
Yeah, I got you.
If there is something wrong, it's very critical.
Uh, yeah, I, okay.
So you're looking to protect the integrity of the audit?
The tax collection is, I would say, yeah, that's all the money coming in, that people pay in taxes.
Well, why don't you have the accountants reconcile that one, then?
That's, I'm wondering if we can't subdivide.
That's the account where we take in all of our funds, we deposit them there, and then we disperse out of that account. Generally, there's no problem with it, but, um, you know, I agree, it should be reconciled on a regular basis.
Okay.
So, if, if I was, if I was gonna advise you as to what to do, I'd say you have the accountants reconcile the tax collection account, that's the only one that's really critical at this point in time. The other ones are very small, uh, or not critical.
Well, it shouldn't take them that much time to do the other ones.
Not a lot of activity in there, and.
But if Mr. Kruger is up to speed, as he thinks he might be, and we can get these reconciled in the next, what's our period, six to eight weeks, maybe?
Yeah. Maybe sooner, you know, the smaller ones are easier to do.
Can we save a couple of bucks? Or do we just?
You'd have to vote on my motion first.
Or you can amend it.
I don't wanna amend it.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to, uh, have the auditors, um, reconcile all the, the, the two CD accounts, the tax, uh, count, and the road maintenance count. Yeah, we, that's the motion, it's been seconded, we had some discussion, uh, you want, actually, we don't need a, uh, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Three, four. Okay, it passes.
Are there any nays?
It would be three.
Never asked for nays.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Passes four to three.
Are you a nay?
Yeah. But I, I think it's imperative we get it done sooner than later, and like I say, that's, uh, that was a big thing that, uh, our, you know, that we do all these, you know, for internal controls, we do all these, uh, um, in a timely manner, so. Okay, motion carries. Next, we have, uh, we had some, uh, damage done on the, uh, tower truck and the, uh, a door at the fire department. And it was a emergency repair, uh, both on the tower truck and, and the door, which I okay, under, I have the right to do that, but I'm bringing it before the board, uh, to let them know and actually formally approve the expenses. They totaled to be $10,015. There'll probably be, be one or two smaller ones coming, 'cause I had the, had them do emergency repair on the doors, so it'll, it could be functional, semi-functional, 'cause at the time of this, it was just, we put it together and closed it to sec, to secure the building. And, uh, so there will be, uh, um, one or two small, more bills coming, but I at least wanted the, the board to approve the, uh, $10,015 that we had so far. And, um, um, it, it is covered by our insurance, and we're gonna be doing an insurance claim on it, and, uh.
For the time being, the $4,910 will come out of the vehicle maintenance, and the balance, which is 206,931, and then the balance will be 206,933 for building maintenance.
Right. But I, I reported it last minute, it just happened, I believe. But, uh, we didn't have any of these numbers, and for, for the parts, it was like a six to eight weeks waiting period, so I, I don't wanna wait a couple more weeks before we can order these. So I, I went ahead and approved it, I, I emailed everybody. And, uh, so I will entertain a motion to, uh, approve the payment of $10,015 for these, uh, bills.
So moves.
So.
Do we have a second, anyone?
Yeah.
She just motioned.
Second?
Okay.
For, and my question is, when you find out about these extra little bills, you'll bring them to us?
Yes.
And, and that would go also to our insurance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, before we do the claim, we're gonna get all our costs involved in this.
Is there a deductible?
I, off the top of my head, I think it's $2,000. But I'm not sure. No, that's where a, a car accident, I don't, I don't think it is, there is a deductible, I'm, I'll have to check on that.
Usually on property, there's some kind of a comprehensive deductible that's probably zero.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I'll have to check on that, but they are aware of it.
Have we been able to take steps to ensure that, I mean, I'm assuming this is an accident, but are there policies or procedures to protect this?
We actually, now, some of the trustees talked to the interim chief, we put in, uh, a few policies and procedures. Actually, the person who was driving the truck wasn't even certified to be, to drive the truck. He took upon himself to do it. And, uh, also, we put in a, a, a procedure or a policy that when you're putting a truck in, back into the building, that you have to have someone directing them. So the person driving wasn't certified, thank God, it happened on our property, private property. If it happened on someone else's property or on the road, we wouldn't have had insurance to cover. And, um, uh, plus, if there was someone directing them, I highly doubt this would have happened. So to answer your question, yes. So we have motion, and, and second, do we have any more, uh, discussion? Hearing none, we gotta do roll call.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Tom Kruger.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have, uh, on our, uh, agenda to elevate dispatcher Jennifer Lumpkin to full-time status from part, part-time. No. She's working.
Support.
Do we have motion? That was my motion.
That was your motion?
I'll make the motion. We have motion and support. Any, uh, discussion? Have you been in the dispatch lately, you've probably met her, she's up working right now, so.
How long's she been on job? How many years?
Uh, she's been with us since September, she's worked for us in the past before, uh, she's worked for other communication, uh, centers in the interim too. Very qualified, uh, excellent employee, um, longtime resident in the area, so she's here to stay.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, motion carries. Next, we have, uh, higher part-time officer Craig Pel, Pelvaridi, Pelvarini?
Pulveranti.
Overe.
Pulveren, okay, sorry. To, uh, for part-time, uh, he's actually here in the board, in our, our meetings. Wanna get up and tell us about him there, chief?
Well, Craig comes to us, uh, retired officer out of Roseville PD for 25 years. Craig comes with a lot of knowledge and, and experience, uh, he's currently also an instructor at McComb Police Academy. Um, he's also done several, uh, missions over to Iraq, Kenya, several other, um, countries, where he teaches, um, combat techniques, SWAT techniques, things like that, to their soldiers. Comes to us, a very qualified individual, bringing a lot to the table with a lot of experience, so. Really looking forward to bringing him on board, uh, some of our other guys have worked for him in the past, uh, can't say enough about him. I think he's gonna be a great addition to the, uh, to the crew over there.
Sounds like a person that would help with the, um, emergency manager.
Absolutely. When it goes bad, he's a good guy to have.
All right, great, thank you. Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we, uh, hire, uh, Officer Craig Pelvarine, how do you say your last name?
Pulveranti.
Pulveranti, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm horrible.
Pulverize.
Pulvy? Pulveranti, uh, is a part-time officer for Clay Township.
I'll support.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations and thank you, and thanks for your service overseas. So, all right, that's it on our new business. Board member comments. Mark, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, I'd like to say, you know, this whole conflict with the fire chief and the way everything went down, I think we should put in place some performance reviews on either semi-annual, annual basis. And so, we can help the individual, if they're gonna have a problem with them in the future or down the road, and kind of review his performance, and let them know where they stand.
Okay. You have anything, Joanne?
No, I don't have anything tonight. Nope.
How are you, Cindy?
I do not.
Okay. Sandy?
Nope, nothing tonight.
Okay, Chris?
I'd just like to say a couple of things. First off, my decision regarding the former fire chief is in no way, shape, or form a reflection of my opinion of the quality, of the high quality we have as firefighters down in that fire hall. So, I don't have a correlation or a tie there. Secondly, a couple of meetings ago, or maybe it was the last meeting, we approved, we approved enough funds for the 800 megahertz pagers of their choice. So, could I ask you again, and I'm sorry that I wasn't closely following, who made the decision to go single band?
Between the police chief and the fire chief, they had a conversation, in fact, a lot of it took it... Yeah, go ahead.
After the last board meeting, we did have another meeting with the vendors and everybody within the county. And what we actually found out there was that, even though it's a single-band pager, it actually has repetitive failsafes. One, say that if our main system goes down, which is linked direct to the state, then our system automatically switches over to a local, which will broadcast locally from our department. Okay, that would be number two. If that goes down, it's also set up to where you can use an actual prep radio to set the tones off out on these. So, really, once knowing that and finding out, basically, there's a triple redundancy with this, that there was really, there's no need for the other. And I think that's what we were looking for, you know, before we were educated in this, was to have that failsafe. And what we were thinking, you know, at the beginning of this was that if the 800 goes down, we could have the VHF as a backup to it. Well, in learning these things at the last meeting, the 800 itself, we're already gonna have a triplet of that. So, we feel pretty confident going forward. We wouldn't have, we would not have any need to actually support and keep the infrastructure of the VHF going, so.
We did find out most of the other fire departments, too, are going with a single...
Yeah, all of them.
All of them.
All of them. And like I say, it came down to after that meeting. They were able to answer those questions, so that pretty much summed it up for us.
Yeah. Thanks, chief.
Last topic that I have is the Merrill Street Bridge project is underway. And there was also some mention of the Flamingo Road Bridge. Does it make sense for the township to explore, a structural engineer, to evaluate the performance of the other?
We get ratings every year, and you'll get them when I, this spring. We get ratings of all the bridges in the township that were required for.
Annually?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and I'll get that to the board once, you know, it's presented to me. It usually is in the spring, and they rate them all, the ones that were, that we are responsible for.
Okay.
And that's the only two. It was Merrill Street and the Flamingo. There are other bridges in the township, though, on Anchor Bay Drive and down Bates Highway, I think there's one in question there. But that's county's responsibility. It's a county primary road, and they're responsible for those.
Okay.
But...
Probably see a lot of culverts coming up there.
Yeah, and, you know, the past two years, we got burned by two culverts. We had one fail on Falkirk.
Yep.
Which that road was actually closed for a while.
A long time.
By the time we got all the permits, I don't know why you need a permit for the Corps of Engineer and the DNR. Or DEQ.
Because it's a watershed, right?
Yeah. But, and then this past year, we had one on, almost condemned. I mean, it was in tough shape on Bayview Shores. That one, I had enough time to get a 50% matching grant for that one. On Falkirk, you know, the township paid the full dime for that one. I remember, because it's a county drain, I called up our drain commission. I told them, you know, your drain broke my road. And he kind of laughed, and he says, "No." You know, you're, you know, I was hoping to get half of it through the county drain. And he says, "No, no, you're responsible for that 100%." I'm like, "Well, if that's the case, you know what? It'd be a lot cheaper if I just C-wallet, fill it in, and call, build a road again." He said, "Well, you can't do that." And I said, "Why?" He goes, "'Cause it's a county drain." That's my point exactly. So...
It's a circle.
Yeah, to put in, you know, the big culvert and everything, it's quite pricey. So, I think Bayview Shores, it was budgeted at about 180 grand. I think it came in, by the time it was done, about 160, 150, 160. So, it ain't cheap. And I have one more I'm a little concerned about, but I did have them look at it. I had a guy in the tube looking at it, and they assure me that it's okay. But I know every year, I gotta put, fill in, you know, when you start seeing potholes on the outside of these culverts, something's happening down there.
Yep.
So, but, yeah, thank you. Yep, Tom, you got anything?
On this firing Darrell DePage thing, you know, like a lot of the other board members, maybe, I'm at a total loss as to why. And I want to know if I, if I asked to see his personnel file, review his personnel file, is that available to any of the board members? Obviously, it has to remain confidential, but is that available to us?
Yeah, that, or you can meet with me. I mean...
Well, either way.
We haven't seen you in a while, so...
I know.
Okay, that's all I wanted to ask. I'm gonna mention, you know, it's definitely a hard decision with Darrell. And, you know, we're put here to represent the taxpayers. And I fully believe that if all the taxpayers knew what I knew and, you know, 85% of them would probably be in agreement with the decision. But we're here to represent the taxpayers. And we can't have every decision be a town hall popularity contest. Because quite honestly, you know, I mean, both times that I ran for this office twice, got re-elected twice, or elected and re-elected by a pretty good margin. And both times, I stressed on it, I have the courage to not make the popular decision, but the right decision. And many times, they're not the same. There's a lot of municipalities where they just do the popular decision, and they end up in trouble down the road. You know, a lot of the cities like Detroit and everything, they, you know, they're not willing, they weren't willing to make the right decision. They just do the popular decision, which gets you by and kick the can down the road for, you know, let someone else deal with it. And basically, you know, I think it was the right decision. So, we really can't comment on it, as our legal counsel did say. But one thing I can do is describe what a good chief does. And it's just not all this, but a good chief should have the ability to communicate openly and effectively with management and other township departments. A good chief should help prepare and manage, effectively manage, the budget and asset replacement plan with a schedule. A good chief should be able to establish and maintain and foster positive relationships with county agencies and departments. A good chief should be able to supervise the fire department in accordance to the township's department policies and operating procedures. A good chief should be able to establish and maintain proper chain of commands and give employees directions. And a good chief should be accountable to the township board. So, I'll just leave it at that right now, and I think that's the only comment I have, so. We need one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Okay, motion of support, all in favor, aye. Thanks for coming, everybody.